We're holding a meeting by the way of Zoom teleconference. Mr. Guarino?
I'm here.
And Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Dottie Oden, Chairman of the Committee, I'm here. Also present is Mr. Donovan, who is the CIOO of the Nashville School District, Stacy Hines, who is the Communications Director, and Ms. Bernardo, who is one of the administrative assistants who is running the meeting. And also Sean Smith is here, Head of Plant Operations. Good evening, everybody. We might as well go into the first item. The first item is the high school furniture purchases.
Okay, so as you, if you recall, we had some of the one-time funds that came down from the state. The total of that was 2.2 million. And we did a budget for that when we prepared the fiscal '21 budget. The alderman put a number, put that amount in a contingency, and we requested $1,445 of that contingency back about two months ago. And one of those items was for high school furniture. So each high school received $100,000. And this request is using those funds to purchase furniture at the North High School. The South has yet to submit all the paperwork. But at this point, you can see that there were three quotes. And they're choosing the lowest of the three quotes. They want to purchase chairs, $1,402. Why it's $1,402 as opposed to $1,400, I don't know. But not going to argue about two chairs. So the total for those chairs, the lowest quote is with WB Mason. So they would like us, they would like the board to approve those. A total of $92,917 to purchase the chairs for the North High School.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So if we don't use this money, the money goes back to where?
Well, this money's in a contingency at the city. So typically, contingency funds, I guess potentially it could be, I don't know what would happen with it. It's a contingency fund. But it is operating budget oriented. It's not grant money. It's operating budget oriented.
Well, I have a problem with this right now, spending the money. The kids aren't back in school. So we're buying furniture for empty buildings right now. We don't even know when they're going back in. So I'm wondering if the money is better sitting in an account until our students go back into school. Because right now, what do we need it for? I'm inundated with all these papers and I've asked a million and one questions. And I ask them again, and I read all this from parents. We have nobody in the buildings. The kid's going back in the building. We don't even know when they're going in the buildings. So we're buying something to put in a building that nobody, it's like furnishing apartments that nobody's going to live there. I'm not going to support this tonight. I'm not going to support money like this until we start, we get a clear answer when have our students going back in the building, Lauren. Because right now, we're just putting furniture in a building. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember that this is part of a long-range plan. So we had problems with chairs in our buildings before, and we didn't have the money to replace chairs. And we had students that were, we had schools, high schools, where they had a chair shortage. And I understand that, you know, there's no one in the buildings right now. But I think, I think it's a good idea to support this. And the reason is because we're not going to be out forever. And when the time comes for us to be back in school, these chairs will be ready. Because we have a chair shortage. And we had a problem with chairs before COVID. And this is part of a long-range plan that administration had taken to us. Because they, before it was an emergency, so we were in an emergency situation. So if we don't replace these chairs, then when we do start up school, we're going to be back in an emergency situation. So I would, I would support this, buying these chairs. Because we, even though the students aren't back now, but they're going to be transitioning in in these chairs. And so it better be prepared than not prepared. So I would, I would move to approve the purchase of these chairs.
Paula, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment off of Mr. Guarino and ask a question, please. But I know he made a motion. I'm not going to second it, so I'll ask my question after. Thank you.
I'll second it, and I'd like to speak to it. I know we have had a severe problem with shortage of chairs at the high school because so many have been broken. I have a question. Are these chairs, I know North, I believe, has ordered maybe 200 or 400. Are these the same chairs that they have been replacing the older chairs with? Do you know?
Yes, that's, that's the plan. The harder plastic, the chairs that are breaking were the chairs that were purchased when the high school was, was built. So they're probably, what, 18 years old at this point? But those chairs were made of a softer material, and they just didn't last as long. These chairs are more of the hard, plastic type of chair, and they're much more durable. And, you know, to the, just to sort of carry on with Mr. Guarino said, this has been an issue at the high school for a couple of years. We've patched it up with small, relatively small amounts in purchasing chairs. But students aren't in right now, but students will be in. And, you know, getting an order of this many chairs, I think it's, it makes sense to get them and get them in the building while we can.
Thank you. I agree with that. My hope is that our students are back sooner rather than later. So I am going to support this because I have, over the years, seen 200 there, 200 here. And it's absolutely a necessity that we have chairs for them. And as I said, I sincerely believe and hope that they are back sooner rather than later. Ms. Johnson?
Okay, two questions. How long does it take once you put the order in for the chairs to arrive?
It depends on the vendor. It doesn't state on the quote, I have the time. I'd have to find that out, but.
Okay, that's number one. And number two, I mean, if we didn't put this in, and we knew it's, let's say we needed about 50 chairs right now. I know the quote is based on the, what, the 1402 chair. But if we only needed 50 to start off with, and then later, I just can't, I can't support something that I don't have a timeframe on when our students are going to get back into school. We keep hearing dates, and it keeps getting pushed, pushing out further and further and further. And I understand that this is our long-range plan, but there isn't a long-range plan right now. There's no plan in place at all for these students to get back to school. So I'd rather have the money sit in contingency with a game plan with the exact date when our students are going to get back into school, then order them, knowing if it takes 60 to 90 days. So if we have a plan, say in 60 days, we know that what our timeframe is to order these. To me, at this point in time, I just can't. I want it, I want dates certain when these students are coming back, and then we could start doing what we need to do. Other than that, right now, it's just an empty building. Thank you.
I guess, thinking about this, if we tabled this until December, and if our high school students start to come back in January, I'm not sure over the Christmas holidays and New Years that we'd be able to get these in place. Any, is there any chance, Mr. Donovan, you could find out what their shipping time would be by the next board meeting?
Yeah, I could find that out, yes.
Could you find that out? And if, if shipping would be a problem, Christmas, New Years, in that period, and November 30th, we should be looking at another plan at the Board of Education for returning students. Maybe we could, could act on the, act on this purchase at that point. I see that as somewhat of a compromise. So, Mr. Guarino, I would ask you, would you be willing to make a motion to table your motion until the next board meeting, November 30th, and act on it at the board meeting if we have a calendar at that point that says some of our high school students are coming back in January, which I'm, I'm hoping?
So, I'm not sure if, I thought that we had to go, these things had to clear through committee before we could take them up at the, at the board meeting. So I'm not sure that we would be able to do that because I thought they cleared through committee first and then went to the full board. These chairs, the problem that I see is that if we are late, we want to replace the chairs. The existing chairs that we have are not as good as these chairs, and they continue to break. So if we, if we do get kids in December and January, or January, and we don't have these in place, the other chairs are just going to continue to break, and we're just kicking the can down the road, you know? I think we need to be prepared ahead of time. I don't see any reason why, why we need to delay. The money's there, and we had planned for this. And I think we should go forward. But I'm not sure how, if I would be able to bring it up at a full board meeting. So, because I thought they had to clear through committee first.
Okay, I will second the motion. Certainly, if we order them, they're not going to go bad. It's not like food or anything like that. So, and, and we know there's a need for these chairs. So I'll take the vote. Mr. Guarino, on the motion to, good Lord. A motion to spend $106,117.28 for 400?
No, Dottie, that's a different quote.
Oh.
It's $92,917.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, the WB Mason, 90, I'm sorry. Let me make this motion again. I move to approve a total of $92,917 for the purchase of,
1,402 chairs?
Say that number again.
1,402 chairs.
Yes, 1,402 chairs, or Nashville High North.
My vote is yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
And Ms. Oden is yes. Motion passes 2-1. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the grant update.
Yes, so as you recall, last, last week, we had a special meeting to discuss the recent arrival of $2,156,000 from the state. These funds need to be used for COVID-type expenses, remote learning, et cetera. And they have to be spent by 12/30/2020. So basically, we've had about two months to spend, to spend the items, get them in-house, and actually have them used. So we went through the list last week. This is just an update on some of the larger items. We can give, I'll give a better update at the next meeting in December. But for the laptops, we decided to go with the quote from IT Insiders for $634 as opposed to the other one. And the reason was, we would not be able to get, RTM could not guarantee the laptops that they had would get here in time. So the worst thing we could do is if we chose RTM to save $4 per machine, and then the machines didn't come in, we'd basically turn around and give $800,000 back to the state. So we've made that decision and sent that purchase order off. So we're ordering the 13,000, and the total is $824,000. The other two items mentioned, the IT infrastructure at the elementary schools, we've made that order at that price, $369,000. And we've also ordered the online software registration implementation that, that has been ordered at $47,536. So that's, that's a quick update on the large items. The one other large item were the air purifiers. Mr. Smith is here. Did those get ordered, Sean?
Yes, they did.
Okay. That was about $150,000, I believe. So those were the, the large ticket items. There's one other, the high school wiring, but that was more paying for something that we've already completed. And then the rest of the items, like I said, we'll give an update on those, on those funds in December.
Ms. Johnson? You're muted.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Smith, please. Because it keeps coming up at our board meetings by our student members and other members about afraid to go into the high school, go into any meetings, afraid because of the HVAC system. Somebody made a comment to me at our meeting Tuesday night, that where I work in retail, our filtration system there would be better, which it's not. How good is our filtration system here? Because it keeps coming up that people don't want to go into the boardroom. People don't want to go back into the high school because, or any of the schools because of this. Can we finally reassure people how good we're really making, going to make this air purification here in our schools?
Sure. Well, I'll start with the high schools. I can say across the entire school district, throughout the summer and into the early fall, we checked every single ventilation system in the school district. Every single school, every single office, everything. Just to ensure that everything is running properly and as designed. And we found very little wrong. We did find a couple of units that we had to repair, and that repair has taken place. So everything is fully functional. Everything is working the way it's supposed to. In addition to that, you may recall, we ordered MERV 13 filters for all the ventilation systems. Those were received in late September and early October. And during the month of October, we replaced all those filters as well. So I say we're in very good shape. Now, the reason I recommended that we purchase air purifiers is there are schools that have many air exchanges per hour. And they all achieve at least three air exchanges per hour. So generally, three to four. Some of the newer schools designed as many as eight air exchanges per hour. So I felt it'd be wise just to have the air purifiers in place for the schools that have, that lag behind a little bit. And those would be the schools that haven't been renovated recently, specifically Birch Hill and Bainton Stable. Also, I've purchased the purifiers from Mount Pleasant. So those are the three schools that, I'm not concerned about any of the schools. If I had children of school age, I wouldn't hesitate to send them in the school district. But those three schools I just mentioned are the ones I would like a little bit extra protection. Think of it as a man walking around with a belt and suspenders on. You don't see that very often, but it provides an added layer of protection. I hope I answered your question.
I think so, because, you know, it keeps coming up, it keeps coming up. And I've even thrown into the pot here UV lights that are supposed to purify and keep it germs down. So I just want to reassure people that we can go back. I'll be the first one to go back into school. I don't care. I don't have any qualms. I'm not afraid. And I guess we have to lead in order for people to follow. And if we're afraid, then people aren't going to, no one's going to want to send their kids back. But, you know, if we've got it from you, Mr. Smith, that the filters are working, and the purification and the air ventilation is good, then I, hopefully, that we can say, yeah, it's time to open up some of us to go back in. Thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
Mr. Guarino?
I just have a quick question because I do not know a lot about these systems. Could you real quickly tell me what an air exchange is and what it does?
Certainly. So any design is, is made by an architect and engineer so that you get fresh air into a room. And in our cases, the standard is generally three air exchanges per hour. So they achieve that by designing the fan size and determining the cubic feet per minute that are introduced into what is called a classroom. And then depending on the volume of that classroom, so you're going from wall to wall, ceiling to the floor, you can determine how many air exchanges you get in that classroom per hour. I talked to Jamie Ulet, who is the lead architect for Harriman. And their recent designs and designs going forward in the middle school project are for eight air exchanges per hour. Rather than the high range, I mean, it's not a bad thing, particularly with the COVID stuff we're going through. But it's something you might typically see in a hospital setting, not a public school setting. But, you know, certainly with the pandemic, you understand that it's a good idea to have more air exchanges. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, very good. I, you know, I had some idea that that's, you know, what, what was happening, but I just wanted to verify, you know, how these things work. But no, that, that's good. Thank you.
If I could just continue, I get asked all the time, oh, what's the air exchange in this school, that school? So it's, it differs from school to school and space to space. Because you have to go through that calculation of figuring out the volume that you're, you're ventilating, and then what the CFM, the fans are producing. So it varies.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, I have a question on the laptop purchase. I noticed the one company that was $4 cheaper, Computer. It says availability is approximately eight to 12 days at present. Yet inside IT Insiders is four-week delivery time. I guess my concern is that these are something we have to have delivered in place and be using, or we lose some money. Do we have any guarantee from either of these companies that we will receive them in time to do all that?
Well, yes. RTM, that's what it says on their quote. But when pushed to say, can you guarantee they would be here by the end of the year, they said, no, they could not guarantee that. IT Insiders did guarantee it. They have a program with HP. I spoke with Greg Rodriguez, the IT Director. I can't remember the name of it, but the program they have basically moves us to the front of the list because it's, it's something that's required to be there at a certain amount of time. So we're sort of, according to Greg, we're moving up in front of some other people. And I'm not saying that's other schools, per se, but just other, other customers. So that's why we decided to go, because I was very clear with Mr. Rodriguez. I said $4 per computer, because they're slightly different computers. The IT Insider computer is slightly better. It's not a big difference. They're pretty close. But I said it's more important that we get them in in time. And so when he pushed both vendors, he felt more comfortable to go with IT Insiders.
Okay. Also, I had a question. When we talked about this, it looked like we had maybe a couple of hundred extras that we were ordering. Am I correct?
Well, yeah, if, if we define the 1,300, let's say there's about 1,000 teachers. And then for principals and other administrators, there's about 100 of those. So that, that leaves you about 200 more. And I'm not 100% sure who they're going to be allocated to at this point. But that's something that, you know, I'll be working on with IT to make sure that we know where they're going to end up.
You know, I could understand having called two or three, maybe four extras at a school in case they, something happens to one, one goes down. So we have replacements. But I'm concerned that we could end up with maybe 100, 125 that aren't being used, and we would have to turn that money back.
Well, I'm hoping that's not the case. I asked Greg also to take a look at the current laptops in the schools. And we have probably about 500 laptops in the schools that are six or seven years old or older at this point. So the reality is with some of these, they will, they will, will move the old ones out and move these in.
So they'd be replacements?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, because that did concern me, especially with the fact that if they're not being used by the end of the year, we have to turn the money back in that. I certainly wouldn't want to do that. I appreciate the help we're getting, and I want to make sure we're using it to, to the best we can. I had another question on, on this computer order. We're doing six elementary schools. What about the other six schools and the middle schools and high schools? Are they already taken care of?
The high schools are taken care of. The, they were just done over the summer and the fall. The middle school being done with the middle school construction project. And the other six elementary schools, we will move forward with maybe some of the CARES Act funds, which have until September of 2021. We may use those funds. We haven't made a commitment yet, but there's potentially funding available in the CARES Act. If not, we would have to find a way to put it through the operating budget at some point.
Okay, thank you. And about how much would that be?
Probably about the same as, as the 369. I would, I would guess it's about the same.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this? Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions on this? Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
I don't think you really need a motion. Probably more informational.
Okay. That's good. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the annual deferred maintenance and capital improvement report, and I think that's you, Mr. Smith.
Yes. So as you know, we do this every year and it goes through the capital improvement committee, which typically meets on the third Monday or so of January, but they want it at least a week, a month before that. So we're trying to reach that schedule. I wanted to first talk about the $460,000 we received this year. It wasn't in the original operating budget, but the funds that came from the state, the part that was carved out and we received the 460. So you may recall the last year I asked for something in excess of a million dollars in deferred maintenance. 460 is a good march towards that number. So the things I want to do with that money and part of we've already started to is the fourth year of a four-year project to conduct maintenance on our chili units. The chili units are at the two high schools and we have two at each, a large one and a small one. They basically gut them and replace a lot of the inner workings, the gaskets, that sort of thing. So this takes care of the fourth year and we'll be done with that. Last month, the Board of Ed agreed to fund the replacement of the roof at Penachuck. I bought the entire roof, the roof in the middle of the, between the classroom wings so that we could also install solar panels. The hope is to have the middle school project actually pay for it when we get to the roof instead of deferred maintenance, but because contingency is something we're watching very closely in that project. Chairman of the Joint Special asked that we do it the way we just did. So I'm hoping to get that money back. Still on the 460, I'd like to replace the storefronts at Bicentennial Elementary School. We replaced about five, I want to say, two or three years ago. When I talk about a storefront, if you look at a classroom around, particularly around the back end of the school, it consists of doorway and windows, especially a metal frame. So those are rotting, they're leaking and I don't foresee us getting to Bicentennial for renovation anytime soon. So this is a kind of a maintenance thing we need to do. Finally, I've been on a 20-year crusade to get rid of carpet in our schools. It's getting very close. So I like to take the remainder of the money, 133,000, and replace the remainder of the carpets at Bain Nostable and Birch Hill. Those will then become VCT. And then in terms of not getting carpet, but just maintaining what we have, the Amherst Street, the media centers carpet was installed circa, that was one of the first schools I worked on. That was late 90s. So that carpet's over 20 years old. And the auditorium carpets in both the North and South High School are 18 and 16 years old respectively and are at the end of their service life. So one and if we get the money back from the middle school project to pay for that roof, then I would like to do the following projects. And this first part is a design fee to replace or install the HVAC or replace the HVA system in the rear wings at Charlotte, Ledge and Fairgrounds Elementary Schools. During those renovations, which took place early this past decade, the budget didn't allow for doing those wings, which resulted in a bit of an inequity situation. The entire school has dehumidification until you get to that rear classroom wing. And so the teachers and everybody have been very good about it, not meaning too too much. But everybody recognizes it's an equitable situation. So I'd like to correct that. The next item is to sand and resurface the two gymnasiums, the main gym floors, something you do periodically. Both of them are in need of it at this point. We do, by the way, we refinish the schools, all gym floors every summer, but this goes a little bit further. It sands down to the basic wood. And then we start over, involves also repeating the lines that athletics use for basketball, volleyball, that sort of thing. Next, we have the South High School track and estimated the design fee to replace that. I invite any of you to walk on the South High School track. Do it sooner than later before it gets super cold and snowy, but there are a lot of rips on the surface. And talking to Lisa Jengrass, and she's talked to somebody at NHIA is that officiate track meets. They may not allow a track meet to go on this high school track until it is repaired. So again, that's a design fee. What I am going to look at between now and the next month or so is what can we do to extend the life of the track, first of all? And see if we can do patches. We did patches some time ago. We've tried doing patches in house, but I have a feeling that the underlying asphalt underneath the surface is cracked. And then once you get cracks, the rubber surface and get into winter and it freezes and thaws and freezes and thaws, bad things happen to your track. So it's a potentially major expense coming up. Preschool building renovation. So last meeting, you all agreed to purchase 55 Franklin Street. And in fact, today I was over there with the fart marshal and the building department and special ed department looking at the facility. And some of the work that we have to do to make it occupiable and safe for our students is going to require some design by an architect. So I'm sending a certain money aside to do that. The primary place we need that is the front security vestibule. You're aware of the security vestibule work we've been doing. Happy that six of the schools' projects are done. The only one lagging behind is Sunset, and that was the easiest job of the schools that we had planned. So Main D, Birch Hill, Ledge Street, Amherst Street, and the two high schools we had work in, that's all now back to see, it was all primarily from grant money from the state. And we are just working with Dan's secretary to get all that paperwork together, which Board of Ed will eventually have to sign. And the last thing on the use of the 460 is the bicentennial traffic. If you've ever been there at opening or closing a school, it's fairly dangerous sight to see. There is an intersection off to the left as you're looking away from the main entrance. And cars come zipping around that corner, come zipping up Bicentennial. There are commences in the vicinity showing your, your speed and showing the school zone. But people turning into the site and then it's also dangerous for students. So probably 10 years ago, I had one site consultant parry plan and we went to the state for safer, safe schools, running safe schools money.
Safe routes to school?
That's it, yes. And it didn't survive that process. At that point, it was, the cost of the whole project was probably $140,000. That was quite some time ago, but this is just the design fee and we looked to actually do the work the following year. So before I go on to FY22, any questions on what I just went through?
Yeah, I have a quick question. On, on the track at NHS South, have you looked at the drainage and how that's working? As, I, I know it's right next to, right next to the river, maybe, or near the river. But I'm wondering if sometimes if the drainage isn't good and your water table's high, that's why you're saying you have the freezing cracking, freezing cracking, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't know what it's like, or maybe, maybe it just needs to be cleaned out or something. But that might be something to just think about. How the drainage system works on the fields and if it, if maybe it needs to be cleaned out or, or improved some way. That way you don't have that high a water table.
We actually had Harriman architects take a look at the track and give us, they gave us a written assessment of it. Apparently we haven't sent that on to you. I probably should. And it certainly will once we get to the design phase. The, but their assessment of the drainage was it's a very, very flat track. So there's, there's no place for water to go until puddles up and then moves off to the side. The only drainage on the field itself are in two corners. There's one near the main entrance where you go in off of the parking lot and one in the kitty corner across the other side. So that's primarily to drain the playing field. What they're proposing in their in their assessment is to put a slight pitch to the, to the track, maybe just 1% to shed all the water to the outside. So I think that's a good idea. Unfortunately, we're not going to know the condition of the asphalt until we pull the rubber off. But in any case, so the range for the actual work was 300 to 400,000. And that range was because we don't know what the condition of the asphalt is underneath. And in any event, we probably should plan on 400,000 to arrive at that 1% pitch for drainage.
Thanks.
Ms. Johnson? You're muted?
Oh, I keep forgetting the bed night. I'll follow up to that question. I have another question. That track has been there for how long?
That track was installed in about, I want to say, 2003 or 2004.
When we redid the high school, when we, when we took it down and rebuilt it, we left just the, basically the frame there. Okay, back then, when we did the high school, did we not know that we had a drainage problem? Because I know we had a big problem at the north school with the coverts. Am I correct?
With the what? I'm sorry.
The coverts underneath the water.
Coverts, yeah.
At the north school.
There were design issues, maybe not, well, there weren't so much design issues, there were installation issues on both tracks. Probably eight, 10, 10 years ago, we totally redid the north track. We took it down to bare asphalt. Chewed up the top layer of the asphalt and started from scratch.
20 years is a pretty good lifespan.
Yeah. They both, they both had issues. And we took care of the north one. We didn't take care of the south. We did, we hired a company to come do some patchwork. The patches are failing and more rubber is failing at this point. So it's, I'd say we got our decent service life out of both tracks, but it's just getting time.
So I guess my question is that when we knew that we had problems that they weren't, they were kind of failing in a way. Did we ever have the contractor come back and correct these things or did we just kind of have to do it ourselves out of our pocket?
Complicated answer because the contractor that was doing the work at South High School went bankrupt. So they started, they started the work and the, actually it was Gil Bain Contracting, which Carl Dubois was a part of back then. Had to come find another contractor to complete the work. I still want to say some of that work was not done properly and you know, it's 16, 17 years later, we're not going to get that contractor back at this point.
Oh, I get it. But my point is when we knew it back then and they go bankrupt, then the taxpayers have to pay again and we never got the product that we paid for. So in the long run, it costs us more money. On the preschool renovations, can you refresh my memory when we said we were going to purchase this building? That we were going to have to hire architect and engineer in to develop plans for the front security and other things? I don't remember that. Am I missing, did I miss something that night? Maybe I was in a brain freeze.
I know that we anticipated having to hire a architect. Again, and this is really just for the main entrances, the security vestibule. One of the things that was identified by the fire department is the width of the openings and the doorways in the main entrance is not wide enough. So it does no, no longer meets code. So that's why I'm proposing that the architect do at this point is just work on the front entrance. All the other things that we might have to do, I feel pretty confident we can, we can handle. And Mr. Donovan did set aside some, some funds which he can talk about.
So, but on this one, did we discuss this that we were going to, the doorways in the front, is this for like handicapped accessibility also?
Yes. Yeah, the front entrance is not handicap accessible.
And I think we did when we, when we discussed the purchase of the building, I mentioned that there were some of the wine funds set aside to get the building into a, make it a school and, but we didn't know what all those things were. We knew generally, but we didn't have specific numbers around specific items until the review was done.
Yeah, I really, I'd like to know what I'm voting on and what the cost is going to be really, the full cost and what the review is. So this way we have a clear picture of what exactly is going to cost the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I just want to say something real quick and no disrespect to anyone, but I, I, I think that the, going, going back to the, to the track at, at South, it's basically in a flood plain. It's next to a river. And to get 20 years out of that track, I think, you know, I think it's, it's what to be expected after 20 years, you're going to have repairs. You know, we have, with, with an area that big next to a, next to a flood, next to a river, you're going to have drainage issues and you're not going to have the most, you know, you're going to, you're not going to have an expensive drainage system. But I, I'm not complaining. So I didn't want anybody to get the idea that I was complaining about what's going on. You know, we have a track, we got, we, we, we got good use out of it and, you know, it's 20 years old, so we need repairs. But I was just trying to, when I talked about the drainage, maybe there was ways that we can improve it, you know, inexpensively. So I wasn't, I wasn't trying to complain about what, what we have and what's going on. It's just that, you know, you have, we have infrastructure and time goes on and it's in use and it just, it's time, time for repair. So I, I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea about what I was, what I was talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Yep.
Mr. Smith?
Okay. So that is kind of what our plan is right now for this, this current fiscal year. So for FY22, attach the memo that I sent was a spreadsheet that kind of lays out our deferred maintenance plan for the next six years. Tonight I'll just talk about next fiscal year FY22. The total amount that I requested is 1.56 million dollars. That is a large amount. It doesn't go down anytime soon. It's a direct result of us deferring projects year after year after year after year. For the longest time, we tried to keep our request at $600,000. And that obviously wasn't close enough. And so it's just, it's just, it's like a snowball going downhill. The more down the hill, the more snow it accumulates, it gets bigger and bigger. Typically, we've gotten 100,000, 200,000, maybe if we're lucky. It's part of the budget process, I understand, having to watch our pennies. It's part of the budget process, I understand, having to watch our pennies. We were fortunate to get the 460 this, for this year. So for next year, uh, the first project I've talked about, I've been already, is the bicentennial track of improvements. Estimating $400,000 to do that actual work. I think I mentioned earlier, it said 140, 150, that, that was, I was wrong, 10 years ago, the number is probably 250. I mentioned previously about the installing a new HVAC systems in the rear wings of ledge fairgrounds in Charlotte Avenue. So that's 460,000 is the price tag for that. Uh, we've talked about just recently the track replacement, I'm estimating 400,000 for that. Then the numbers go down a little bit after, at that point, so Mount Pleasant Painting, our custodial staff does a good job of painting what they can reach. Uh, they can reach the walls in the classrooms and the main entrance, um, but the tall walls, uh, the gymnasiums and especially in the, the large uh, stairwells, we can't reach, it takes specialized equipment and we'd contract that work out, so that's what the $75,000 is. As Mr. Greeno just said, uh, things do break, things reach the end of their service life. Uh, we're just completing the uh, chiller unit rehab. Um, and we should be good for another 15 years, that's like a midlife renovation. Now, we need to address the uh, cooling tower at the north high school and that's 150,000 dollars. Um, the final thing is to conduct some security improvements, primarily new cameras to uh, cover areas that, so gaps in our coverage and uh, I've got one, two, three, four elementary schools where you'd like to install those cameras, that project comes to 100,000 dollars. So I'll take a pause there and see if you have any questions about that.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Okay, finally, uh, capital improvements, so you're all well aware of the middle school construction project. Uh, Fairgrounds Middle School project is going very well. With uh, knock on wood, minimal uh, eating away of our contingency. I think when the project is said and done, you're, everybody's going to be very happy with it. Uh, we've started some work at Penachuck primarily to get ready for next spring and summer's work. We've done some wiring, uh, and obviously the vestibule project. Uh, then uh, probably in the late spring, early summer, we'll be starting a new middle school project. So it's uh, great that the city has supported that. And uh, eventually we can retire Elm Street, which is itself at the end of the service life. See, uh, also, uh, starting up, actually this coming month, our energy performance contracts, uh, that this board approved previously, uh, the two high schools and that um, just under 7 million dollars, I believe. And that will reduce our footprint on the environment plus uh, result in a lot of savings, uh, which will actually be used to pay back the project. We anticipate the savings will be actually higher than the, what the, the lease is going to require for payments. So we should see some savings in our, our pocketbooks. Looking at it longer term, um, Burchill and Main Dunstable will be our next two schools that we'd want to look at renovating. They were last done about 30 years ago. It's going to be, by the time the middle school project is done and the dust is settled from that, it's going to be 35 years since they're renovated, which is quite a long time. Um, Mount Pleasant uh, is, is right behind them, you could argue that Mount Pleasant goes before those, uh, I would say, uh, I, I think Main Dunstable and Burchill primarily because the way the schools are set up with open concept and it is a bit of a security concern. And as I alluded to earlier, the HVAC systems are at the end of their service life and should be upgraded. But after that done, you, you're really starting to cycle all over again. New Surles, Vice General, Dr. Chris and all, and Emma Street were all done in the mid to late 90s. It's uh, already been 20 years for the, the, the last one, so you're just going to be redoing that cycle. Some other uh, major projects we anticipate are additional security projects, improvements, uh, and replacement of the, uh, repair of the pavement at the north high school. If you go around that school, you can know there's a lot of dips and doodles and um, cracking asphalt, which will need to be addressed. And finally, Lisa reminded me that uh, be time, uh, in a few years to replace the turf at Stella Stadium. That, that has a uh, life of about 10 years, 12 years. And uh, seems like just yesterday or last year that we replaced this last time. Uh, first time around, we got uh, eight or nine years of service and we're anticipating 12 years at the point. So that's my deferred maintenance and capital improvement look ahead, any other questions?
Anybody have any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that uh, update and I guess a heads up as to what's coming up. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
I think, I think we need a motion to approve that, to send up the full board.
The, the uh, capital improvements, I'm, I will move to uh, approve the deferred maintenance plan as presented.
I'll, I'll second that. Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Motion passes unanimously and thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, um, the next item is the communications audit and I believe that's why Ms. Heinz is here. Sorry you had to wait so long. You're muted.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Okay, uh, if you want to start about the, your communications audit, I, it's a lot to do with social media, which I guess would be a lot different from the last communication audit that was done.
Yes, a lot's happened in 15 years. A lot more tools, a lot more methods to communicate and um, this is just the next step in um, the way we are reviewing and trying to improve upon how we communicate. As you recall, we did a redesign of the school district website and the school websites and those were launched in January. And uh, we're about now to um, launch our upgraded mass communication system, Blackboard Mass Communication System. I believe technology is busy training the principals and administrators on uh, the expanded functions that we have with that. So um, taking that into consideration, um, we just thought this was a really good time to take a look, uh, particularly external communications and um, how we could harness uh, social media to communicate better or other methods to communicate. With the onset of um, COVID, I mean, it's brought attention to um, how we communicate, how we communicate in a crisis. We've been doing things a little differently than we traditionally do. We have uh, brought in some new software that came out of the uh, task force that was put together by Dr. Mosley for the reopening. Um, we've had a soft launch of the Remind software with our ELL staff. Certainly the Google Classroom, which many teachers had used before um, COVID, but uh, is being obviously used quite widespread, that has a communications function, as does Seesaw, which is the software that a, a lot of our, I believe our kindergarten, grade one and grade two teachers are, are, a lot of the grade two teachers are using. The district has a Twitter account, which we launched three years ago. The district also has a YouTube channel, which is used primarily in-house. Um, and we also have the MailChimp software that we use um, for our digital newsletters. So this is a good time to really kind of take a look at all these tools, how we use them, can we use them better? Are there other tools out there we should be utilizing? And I think the best way to do that is to turn to someone who's um, in the industry and can hopefully give us some great advice and do a little bit of an audit for us and on what we do and make some recommendations for improvement. Um, I did um, reach out to a few companies. Jackson, Jackson and Wagner is very familiar in New Hampshire and Southern New Hampshire. That was the firm we used 15 years ago for our last communication audit. I did approve, approve, approach the National School Public Relations Association, NSPR. They've been around a long time and um, I know I actually used to uh, go to a couple of their annual conferences to learn about communications and um, they're, they're very knowledgeable and I approached them. Montong Communications out of Manchester, uh, I had worked with them before when um, they handled Justice, uh, Justice Broderick's uh, campaign for um, mental health awareness and we've worked with them before because we've had um, the chief justice here in the schools. Uh, so I turned to them and asked for them uh, for a quote and also I turned to Matter Communications, which is big in the region, um, for a quote and their quote came in Tuesday as expected for $8,500. So um, at this point, I was just hoping that uh, to get an approval uh, from the, from all of you to move this forward to the full board uh, to initiate a, a communications audit.
And you recommended JJW, the uh, company that we used, I think it was back when Joe Juliana was superintendent.
That's correct, yes, um, I, I, I do recommend them, uh, obviously there's a familiarity there. They're very familiar with our school district. Um, they've worked with a lot of school districts in the region on similar audits and, and advising on strategies. They were extremely reasonable with their price. It was um, 52, 50 to 6,000 with an option, if you wanted a full presentation at the full board level, I think that's an extra 1,500. But I feel confident in, in good advice that they could give us. The others are very similar in their approach, it is a matter of delving into what we do now and studying how we communicate and um, talking to stakeholders, um, talking to uh, our principals and how they communicate, our administrators and how they communicate. And um, and then coming up with the recommendations, so the approach with all these firms is very similar. But I really feel that JJW could, could do the job quite nicely for us.
And, and they are the cheapest.
They are.
They're the lowest, I don't want to say cheapest, the lowest, the most reasonable.
Okay. True.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, say I took myself off mute this time. So I guess my, uh, one of my questions is to give us a formal presentation, if they want the job, they're going to charge us $1,500. I mean, I would think if you want the job, you come in here without charging us the $1,500. So if I was to ask for a presentation, I put it in um, not to exceed $6,000 and that JJ, what is it, JJ?
Jackson, Jackson and Wagner.
Yeah, JJW includes that $1,500, that, it does, eliminates that $1,500 to give the board a presentation. Couple of things here, um, so we're talking social media. We Twitter account, I'm glad Twitter doesn't block us, YouTube doesn't block us. Now, who came in and helped to do the website for us? Who did that? Do they give us? Yep.
Uh, that was Blackboard.
Okay, because some of us have complained that on iPads and on iPhones, you can't open up it, any um, different sections of it because it's like all scrambled on iPads and iPhones. So I mean, I want to make sure that whatever we get, uh, we don't have any glitches like that. But if we went along with this, I would make a motion to um, accept uh, JJW's scope of work not to exceed $6,000 and to give the board um, a full formal presentation at their cost, that we won't be charged for that.
Um, I, I could go back and, and negotiate that, I think uh, the thought was um, I could actually make the presentation on the final recommendations and I wouldn't charge you $1,500. Did you hear that, Mr. Donovan?
Loud and clear.
Thank you.
It's just, I think it's, you know, if you're getting, you know, of a district or whoever is taking, you know, your services, I think it's, you know, $1,500 is a little bit much to come in and give a presentation to a board, just so we could see it. You know, sometimes you eat the cost a little bit, you negotiate it in order to get the job. So I'd make the motion, we accept the work from JJW for the audit, the communication audit not to exceed $6,000. And if they'd like to give us a presentation, no cost.
Welcome for a second.
I will, uh, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
But I have a question. Did you say that this company, this, this um, company was, was not going to talk to, are, are they going to talk to stakeholders who have um, visit about how they think um, our, our district is communicating with them?
Uh, from what I understand, uh, part of that um, audit will be on responsibility of me to try to support, you know, them and their efforts and getting the feedback they need from stakeholders um, on the effectiveness of our communications, so. Kind of a little bit of a partnership between the school district and the firm.
Because what we are using, we are using um, things, I mean, we, we could do like a survey, what do they call it, not MailChimp, but Survey Monkey. We, we, we could maybe put together a, a survey of people in the district, how they think we're communicating. I, I don't, I don't think it would be a lot of man hours and a lot of cost to, to do something like that. But it, it could be part of it or it could be, it could be part of the feedback that you give them. It might be, uh, might be worthwhile to, to find, you know, to find out what people think about how, how we, how well we communicate and, and the methods that we use to communicate to constituents and parents and students, et cetera.
Uh, keep in mind, a lot of that came out of the uh, task force this summer about, with, around the reopening plan. We did have a dedicated uh, communications uh, committee, subcommittee that discussed communications. So certainly the data we gathered there will be sharing with the firm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, I, I would just like to say, um, looking at the other quotes, we got especially the highest one, which was 15,500, I think their quote is very reasonable. I like the fact that we've dealt with the company before and it is a New Hampshire company. If, if uh, you want to just ask them if they could do better, if we do ask for a, a presentation, if they could do better than the $1,500, I think that's fairly expensive. I think it's fairly expensive for a presentation, but I'm not the one doing it, you know? I understand they're in business to make money, but I, I don't, I, I, you know, I, I think going up $6,000 for this communication audit is very reasonable, especially looking at the other quotes, so. But if you can ask them if they could do better, should the rest of the board want uh, uh, presentation on this, that would be helpful, Stacy.
So would you like me to go back to them and ask for a revised quote uh, when we bring this before? So would you like me to go back to them and ask for a revised quote when we bring this before the full board?
Quite personally, I think we could vote on the 6,000 tonight. I don't see that changing, but if
Right.
you go back with them with that, say gee, the, the committee was asking if you can do better than 1,500 for our report.
I, I will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I think a motion was made and
I made the motion.
Johnson made it and I, I seconded.
Okay.
It was not to exceed 6,000.
Right.
And not to include the formal presentation.
Okay, Mr. Garino.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Odness, yes. Thank you so much, Stacy, and sorry you had to wait so long.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, moving on, we have the October financial report.
Okay, so we'll, we'll run through this. It'll take a few minutes to run through it. The last couple of months, it was early last month. It was early on in the, in the fiscal year and last month, we had a very long meeting. Shoot through a few highlights. I'm looking at the, the report that shows monthly expenses, the month by month expense by account. So we start with salaries and wages. As you can see, the October number is higher than the September number. And the main reason for that is that there were five weekly pays in October and two bi-weeklies, where in September there were four weeklies and two bi-weeklies. So that's what the main difference there is. Same with wages part-time, the number's higher, but there was an extra weekly and all, all part-time wages would be defined as weekly. And then the overtime, then it's, it's down most of what the increase, most of what the amount, the 12,000 this month was for the trades group. They were finishing up some electrical work and some HVAC work over the last few weeks. The wage is temp seasonal, that's custodial, extra custodial help when somebody's out. Or where someone has left and was short-staffed, we hire temps for that. That's what that line is. The wages per diem, as you can see, that's starting, that's up to 71,000. And that's mostly the long-term subs that we've been able to get for teachers that are, are out on FMLA, typically for long period of time, longer periods of time. So that's a number you probably see fairly steady for the next couple of months at least. Longevity, this is a small negative number. That's that 1,294 you see there in August. That's a glitch, it's happened a couple of times in our payroll system. When we rehire someone that used to be an employee here, had it happen like three different times, the system automatically generates a longevity check for the person. Don't know why, we've tried to fix it. It's something that city needs to work on, but we located it and the person is paying us back over the next three months. Other than that, the stipends, those are head teacher stipends. So that's pretty much what the cost will be each month for the head teacher stipends. And the retirement and separation pay, those are most teachers that were retiring. I will update that next month and, and based on where we are now at about 805,000 and, and retirement separation pay, we're probably pretty close to what we expected for the year. But I'll have that updated next month. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, additional hours, you missed that, I think, that line item?
Yeah, that's, I, just because it's sort of the same as it, as it was last month. I didn't change much, so I didn't, I didn't go through it individually.
And what exactly is the additional hours for?
Additional hours in the summer, you see the numbers are large, that's summer school costs. And then additional hours after that, typically it's for salaried teachers that continue to do some work outside of their contract. So what you'll see is that number will probably go down as time goes on. It won't typically be much higher than that unless sometime in the spring they put together some committees and things like that.
So what would they be doing right now outside their contract?
I would probably have to check with curriculum, but they may be talking about how, how the remote learning is going. They may be talking about Google Classroom, some of the new products they're using. There, the curriculum group has certain certain groups, there's an ELA group, there's a math group, there's a science group, and they get together and talk about things and plan for the future and deal with current curriculum issues.
Thank you.
Okay, the next set is the fringe benefits. As I've mentioned, most of that, those costs come back from the city through an allocation. So there's really not much to speak to there. The next professional technical services, you'll notice the legal service line. That's going to run well over budget. A lot of lawyers, we've had a couple of other legal instances that have come up. But simply going forward, we've got two retainers that are going to cost us a minimum of 9,000 a month going forward. So that number is going to go well over what we budgeted. And, you know, some of that cost is related, can be probably related to the COVID pandemic. We will go through and any costs that can, we have the ability to charge those back to the grant. So we need to go back and look at the detail. But that line, just based on the agreements we have, will be above what we budgeted. And then there's the sir, other services, you've noticed the pupil support service line. It's a big amount this month of 203,000, where it was small last month. That's the OT and ET costs for the special ed children. Basically what happened was the September invoice didn't get entered into October. So if you add those two numbers together, that's like 224,000 last year, September and October, the same time period is about 235,000. So it's, it's just one, September costs moved to October. Other than that, it, it seems reasonable. And contracted services, there were some higher numbers in August and September. And those were contracts, IT contracts, where we, we signed some service contracts for our servers, et cetera, earlier in the year. And I think there was also one related to to plant operations. So those are fine, all things that were in the budget. Okay. Next is the property services. And the first three I usually dig into pretty closely are electricity, heating, gas and water. Electricity is running much lower than last year, which is what we expected. If you recall back in May or June, we agreed to use some of the excess funds from last year's budget to pay down the Smart Start programs in advance. So we're starting to see that benefit in our electricity line. For example, you're looking at for August, September and October, the numbers you see there, 128, 153 and 140. Last year it was 165, 180 and 185. So those combined is over 100,000 less than it was last year. So like I said, I, I haven't calculated yet the exact amount of the Smart Start savings on a monthly basis, but we did pay off a lot of them. So that's, that's really what you're seeing there. Other than that, you can see in September, we did pay on the copier maintenance contracts. We paid that half at the beginning of the year, half in the middle of the year. We're not in school, so I'm guessing that the costs of copies this year will be down. It will be interesting to see though, because some teachers are going in, preparing copies and sending them to their students or having pickup, pickup times. So it's, it's a very different year, so we'll see how that all goes. And then other than that, there's the maintenance agreements. At the bottom of that is the rentals. And you'll notice in July is 159,000. That is pretty, is just encumbering the full amount of the funds for Brentwood, which is a base rent. It would not include any other things like the additional, the CAM that shows up later in the year, but that's basically the base rent for this year. So that's those accounts. Other services, not too much really to speak to there. Most of the accounts are pretty steady thus far. Postage and delivery, there is a a larger amount in October. We have, I think, five different locations that have postage machines and three of them happen to fill up their postage all in the same month. So that was just, that's going to be a blip for October and you shouldn't see that very high going forward. And then slide down more transportation services. The transportation service is interestingly enough, a bus company, a large bus company like First Student, there tends to be a lag in getting us the first month of invoices. So we just started to receive the invoices. Some of them got put into October and some of them didn't. Will be, we actually started looking at it just the last day or so. So I'll be able to give you a more detailed report for the transportation services next month as far as where we stand with those invoices. Question, yes?
Yeah, that was one of my questions that I had sent you about the buses. How many are we using? Are we using anything at this point?
Oh, yes, we're using, keep in mind, we're transporting special ed students, we're transporting kindergarten, we're transporting first grade. I don't have the answer right now, like how many of the buses? We, we run 80 to 80, you know, let's say 85 buses typically in, in normal circumstances. So I don't know the answer to that question yet. Like I said, we're working on it, we'll get it. But we are using not all those 80 buses, but we are using a number of buses.
So are we paying for their bus drivers if we're not using them like we did during, when in March?
Well, what we, the initial plan, if you recall, when we were beginning to open up, going to be back in school in October, that was the original plan. So at that point, since we had just signed the contract with the bus company, we agreed to give them the 80% number that we had given the first couple of months in the spring, knowing that many of the other schools were going back. And if, if our plan at that point, which it was, was to go back to school in October and all the drivers, we lost a lot of drivers. So we agreed to the 80% number for the first, I think, five, six weeks, whatever it was. And now we're paying for the buses full rate if we're using the full rate on the bus.
Okay, so we didn't open up the way we were supposed to.
Right.
And we paid the 80% for buses that we didn't use.
Yes.
I'll tell you something, as a taxpayer in the city, I'm not happy that we paid for something that we're not using. Especially when parents are up in arms, the ones who wanted to send their kids back full time, even hybrid. So we paid 80% for buses that aren't being used. Now we're using some buses. Yeah, I'd like a whole big audit on this thing, but I'll tell you something. As a board member, I'm not happy. As a taxpayer of the city, I'm not happy. Last year was one thing, but when we said that, when, when we had a plan in place to send the kids back and this plan was pulled out and now we're paying for something that we're not using, that's just ludicrous. That is just out of control. And I know that was one of my questions here, the total number of students broken down with the buses. Because I don't know, something came over me yesterday and I, you know? Yeah, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm just really annoyed about this. That we're paying for something that we're not using. And it's not the bus driver's fault. It's definitely not their fault, but we shouldn't be paying for something that we're not using. It's the whole thing in the city already. City Hall's not open, but we're paying for it. Thank you.
Okay. And then tuition out of district, which is our big issue each year. The good news is we had our first review of the current group of students. It's fewer students than we had last year. The negative part is most of those, most of those out of district schools increased their prices. Even, even in the time of COVID, even when many of them are, some of them, I shouldn't say many, but some of them are actually partly remote. But you know, it is what it is with that. We get a lot of flexibility once the student's in there, in those schools, then they're typically not going to move unless there's an agreement between the district and the, and the parents. So like I said, hoping with the fewer number of students, but with the, my guess is it's, it's going to be at least as much as it was last year, but I'll know a lot more as, as time goes on. Okay, supplies and materials, not too much there. The spend, as you would expect, for office supplies and ed supplies and medical supplies and things are a little lower than you typically see this time of year, since most of the students are not in the buildings. So they've sort of held off on that. And then you see the supplies, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, et cetera. Those are, Mr. Smith's managing those. So as I've said before, he does a good job and they'll be, that's based on need. So they go down, they start on need. And other than that, you get down to the bottom and there's the, the books line is 344,000 for books. I didn't get a chance to find out which books those were, but I will have an answer for you next month. And then other than, go ahead.
No, I was going to say I have a question on out of district, but why don't you finish up and then I can ask it?
Okay. All right, and then the equipment, there's computer equipment that we purchased at the beginning in July to get it prepped for school. Same with the software, you pay most of your software licenses in the first couple of months of the year. They're annual fees that last the full year. And then debt service. Now you'll notice that in July, we made the payment for the copiers and printers. And then you'll notice in October, there's that 249,000. I'm not 100% sure why that's not exactly 250. There might have been a, I'll have to take a look at the, at the, at the books. But basically the, remember the one-time money? We used 250,000 of the one-time money as a down payment for the lease, so that going forward for the next six years, we can pay a basic $97,000 a month to cover the costs of all the copiers and printers of the district. So that's, that's what that, that amount is in October. So in total, we're, you know, 25.99, let's call it 26%. Costs incurred year-to-date versus the budget and we're, what, 4/12 for the year through, 33% through, so. Any other questions?
I had a question and it goes to out of district. I know you said most of them increase some. I, I believe last year, the school we send the most students to is in Massachusetts. And am I correct in remembering? And am I correct in remember, remembering, or I believe I remember, they went up $20,000 per student?
Correct. I'm not sure if it was exactly 20, but it was in that area, yes.
And we had like 18 students there?
Yes.
Okay. Have we seen any increases like that this year for that many students?
We have not for, that school went up again this year, was maybe 3,000, but it went up again. And most of the students to start the year were remote, so a little surprised. But we have reduced, a, a few of the students have moved on from there. So at least it's not 18 anymore, it's probably closer to 14. The, we have had some increases. But the, the, the higher increases I've seen have been for a couple of our residential students. One student moving from gay to residential, that's obviously a big increase. And one of the residential schools where one of our students is, there was like an 11% increase this year, too.
Can you just tell me now, at this point, what is the total per student at that school in Massachusetts? Where we send our highest number of out-of-district students to, what is the cost per student?
It's approximately $95,000 a year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, why don't we move on to the transfer report? That should be short.
Yep, it should be very short. Okay, there's just two transfers this evening. The first one is Fairgrounds Middle School moving some of their supply dollar amounts to computer software, so they could purchase the school license for NearPod. NearPod is one of the softwares that we're using. If you just want to go take a look at it online, just put in a search for NearPod and a, you can see it in a tutorial explaining what it does. And it's, I think it's been a good tool for the math and science teachers at the middle schools. So that's what that is. And the second one is our printing, we do this entry every year, basically in, in a way to save funds. We reach out to each of the schools and say, okay, what forms or sort of group printing do you, do you know that you need as you head into the year? We, we combine that together, get a, get a good price, get the printing, and then we turn around. So we charge that just to one place when we, when we make that initial purchase. And then we go through and figure out which school gets what. And we just transfer those to the individual schools. So that's what you see, those are the, the quantities requested by each of the schools and then crediting back O1, which is the administrative building. And that is it for the transfer report.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the transfer report?
I'm moved.
I will second.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Odness, yes, motion, the passes unanimously. I think that's it. Hour and a half tonight, much better than two hours and 45 minutes from the last meeting, Mr. Donovan. So thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Donovan, the, the list of questions that I sent, do you know when? Some of them were answered tonight, so I was chucking them off, like the buses and the HVA system. Would I be able to have the answers before, like even the curriculum committee meeting? That's before the 30, I think that's next week sometime?
I can probably get most of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Odness, yes. Mr. Donovan, thank you very much. I appreciate everything, and I think we accomplished something tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, and thank you, Gabby.